... Your order. I'd like you all to stand and please. And let you ladies to the name of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As always, we welcome you here, we're glad you're in attendance, and I'll begin the meeting, but I recognize that Melvin Vines, our administrator for his reports to the commission, Ms. Vines?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I have several items for you, as you can see on your agenda there. Today, I'll practice my report, as always, by giving you the personnel report, the vacancies and the field positions and the service of the county and the various positions that are authorized under the budget that we're operating under in this fiscal year. In the Sheriff's Department, we have four vacancies for detention officer. Moving now to the County Commission Office, accounting and personnel, we have a vacancy for clerk type just one, I've completed my interviews for that position, but I'm not hiring anybody as of yet. Moving now to the Engineering Department, we have a vacancy in the position of equipment operator, three, and two vacancies in the position of bridge man. We've had those bridge man vacancies for some time, and I'm pleased to be able to get two persons placed in those jobs, but we've let it go by until the end of the holidays, because you know we have shutdowns, road bridge, the force is coming up shortly. In the Tax Collector's Office, we have two vacancies in the interlevel position of clerk one. In the Tax Assessor's Office of the county, we have a vacancy for property appraiser, two, and free vacancies for interlevel clerk one, all in the Tax Assistant's Office. In the Licensed Commissioner's Office, we have a vested vacancy for fiscal clerk. And in the Maintenance Department, we have a vacancy for custodian. The maintenance director has interviewed at latest election, and we have a person attending physical to come to work, field custodian vacancy in that department. Since the last reported to you, the county has filled two vacancies, both at this sheriff, Hunter Strickland and Jason Malone, were promoted to deputy in the Sheriff's Department. Next test that we will administer on the National Civil Service Board will be for detention officer, this is scheduled on January 14th of 2013, and at this point, we have eighty-three applicants already for detention officer. And the County Civil Service Board will next meet for their regular monthly meeting on January 16th of 2013. If there are no questions on the personnel report, I will move on to other items on the agenda.
Anyone have any question, Ms. Vines, regarding personnel issues?
All right. All right. I have on the agenda a topic of looking at our meeting schedule for the new year. We have some conflicts with the schedule of meeting of the commission on the first and third Wednesdays of the month due to the activity of the Association of County Commissions and constenance with Auburn University in conducting training for our new commissioners. We have a conflict with the third Wednesday in February, the 20th of February, and we have a conflict with the third Wednesday in March, the 20th of March. I believe I've provided a calendar to be in front of you there, showing the proposed changes in schedule under the circumstances that we need to change the schedule of February and March. I propose that we change meetings in January, February, and March to the second and fourth Wednesdays for those three months only, to replace the first and third Wednesdays. Also complicating the schedule is the NACO conference is March the first through the sixth, if you look at March's schedule. The only complication that I've been able to discern regarding that, as I checked the County School Board's website, and I believe spring break is the week of March 25th through the 29th, I don't know if that would be a conflict for any of you, but we have several variables in there. In my view of what we had, Commissioners College, NACO Conference, and some conflicts with people for the second of January, I thought changed the second and fourth month, if you have heard.
Okay. Yeah, we'll need a motion to establish those or make those alternate commission meeting times if you need, and what else, have you? So let's get a motion second, then we'll comment.
I move that we adjust to the second and fourth.
All right, first and then it's second, now discussion. Any comment or discussion or other to that? I'm assuming if anything were to come up as we normally do, if we had to reschedule something more unforeseen anyway, we would deal with that. I think the requirement is that we give a five-day notice or something along those lines to a meeting change.
It is five days.
Whatever, five days, yeah. So we can make that.
That's covered, Mark, Kevin, Mark.
And January.
January, February, and March. We got the same problem in January as well. That's what started it, I think, was looking at January and saying, oh, we need to.
So we have continuing conflicts.
Yeah, we got to continue the conflict, same conflict for the first three. Any other discussion? All right, here, none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known to say an aye. Any opposed, motion carried.
Thank you, sir. Moving now to my next subject is, we are looking at options for televising the County Commission meetings, and I'd like to revisit what I reported in the previous meeting, although I did not have that in front of you. We had an offer from Kevin Jones, who produces the city council meetings, to take the County Commission meetings for a rate of $125 per hour. It would be less if we purchased the equipment. His estimate, at the time I talked to him, was $20,000 to $30,000, purchase the equipment, but he would not tell me what reduction, how much reduction there would be for the $125 per hour rate to take it with his own equipment. We talked to Chris Weaver, who folks us a rate of $200 per hour to play back the commission meetings on both Comcast and Charter, but we've had a decision to make in terms of a block of time that we have to guarantee that we will pay for, because our commission, the length of our commission meetings vary, and they've got to have a discreet block of time to block out for us. So if we blocked out a four-hour block of time, the meeting only lasted two hours, we would have to tell them what to fill in the remaining two hours with. We could replay portions of meetings that lasted two hours or have any other programming in there. That's my discussion with Chris Weaver. And I discussed also with Skip James with Charter Communications, who represents the Charter company, and he says that he can give us a government paid channel, that's public educational governmental channel, and that would be available Sundays a week, 24 hours a day. It's free to us. The restrictions are, it's available on Charter only, and it cannot be broadcast live, it would have to be taped and mailed on a disc, and so we wouldn't have both Charter and Comcast or other media. That's what we had at the last meeting. And not to be too confusing, not to be more confusing than clarifying, I have before you today my findings discussing the Bowlin County. The Bowlin County has been broadcasting their meetings since 1996. They tell me they're the only county in Alabama to broadcast, to televise their meetings. Their meetings generally last three to five hours. Their contract for the first three and one-half hours is $1,777. Each additional 15 minutes is $37.50. Their cost averages between the minimum of three and a half hours, $1,777, $2,000 for the county administrator of Bowlin County. They have a stage crew, as it were, that produces theirs, they have stage light illumination of the commissioners' bench, and it is played seven days a week, 24 hours a day, on their franchise cable outlets, of which I understand there are two paid channels that play a franchise in Bowlin County. And they also broadcast it live on the internet. So that's the details of Bowlin County. And also, we talked to Scott Collins, administrator for the City of Northport, and he sent emails that I have before you there, telling how they do theirs. They tape their council meetings every two weeks, you can read their, edit them, play them twice each week on Charter, and he gives the times there. And he recommended that we talk to Scott Johnson, who coordinates all of that, and you can see what Scott's is in the email that I have before you there. Then I received an email just this afternoon from Scott, Scott Johnson, mine Scott Collins, telling us what he could do for us and what his rate would be, which as you can see there is rather reasonable, but if you read down, he refers to the other competitor, he refers that Jones Media, Kevin Jones, does this on a more full-time basis, and says he's really not geared up to do the production as much as he would be geared up to be an agent for contacting Charter and Comcast on our behalf as our agent to televise it. That would be in the, about the fifth paragraph of what Scott Johnson just emailed to us. And unless there are any questions, of what I have here, Mr. James Tullage has done some investigation on some other options, and he is in attendance, if it would be proper, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Tullage should tell us what he has. And then, we also have with us Mr. Van Bradley, who is taping the meeting today, and his offer is the last thing you have before you. Mr. Bradley's in the back of the room.
Mr. Tullage?
Yes, sir. Just an update with Kevin Jones, I talked with him this morning, he was the one that the city hired originally before they started broadcasting, he came in and did an analysis, they hired him to come and do that, and he recommended the equipment and kind of set it up. The equipment would have to be integrated with our audio, and then we would buy the cameras, fix the cameras in the room, however many you wanted, the city uses two. In talking with the city, they originally purchased the equipment almost four years ago, and they have upgraded it. There wasn't an exact cost that Doug knew there, but the estimated cost is about $25,000 to $30,000. That's going to be given as high definition to the television. Now, for us to go to the internet, we would at that point have to buy an encoder, and we could stream directly to the internet. If you wanted to just do the internet, we could bypass television and do it directly to our internet site, and there are multiple ways we can do that. But basically, the equipment cost is going to be the same for the production, you got to buy the cameras, you got to buy a switcher where the video goes into, so you can switch the picture however you want to, someone would have to do that in production. And then it would go into the encoder and then to the internet. At that point, there are ways that we can do it, and there's a couple of companies I have looked at. Granicus is kind of the company that is the one that has been doing it the longest, and they have several options for us to look at. One of the options is a module which would allow us to take that video and index it with our agenda on our website. So when users came into the website, they could see the agenda, they could click on a particular part of the meeting, and it would go to the video, so it would be indexed together, so it would be easy to search into that. And so we could have as much history out there as we wanted, users could go through, search through the agenda, see it, and look at it. There is also a module that if we decide to stream it live, we could have what's called a community interaction module, so we can allow users in the community to actually ask questions through the internet to the commissioners while the meetings go on. So they wouldn't have to be here in the meeting, they could just pose a question on the internet through, you would see them on your laptops, and then choose to answer the questions or whatever. So that equipment cost, like I said, is going to be fixed. The development cost would probably take us about 40 hours worth of time to do the development, to integrate those. The cost from Granicus, I just talked to them this morning, and I will be having a meeting with them on Friday, and I will have a further update for you on the exact cost it would be to integrate that into our website. Any questions?
I'll ask you, anyone?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if it would be proper this time, Mr. Bradley, to.
He can address us, because he doesn't be a gentleman. He's probably yet trying to do us a live demo as we speak. We're glad you're here and give you an opportunity to speak to the commission.
In fact, that is, and I'm Van Bradley, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. My company is Cyber Jones, we're up in Fayette, Alabama. We've been live streaming city council meetings and election returns since January and February of this year, earlier. And we have a website set up, visiblemeeting.com, and I'll give you each a card that has the link to that website. We find that it's tremendous as far as citizen engagement. We've been told from city employees that have been unable to make meetings, they just stealth them while they're off in Atlanta or other places, so it's been helpful in that regard. We are streaming live from, onto YouTube right now as we speak. And some of those things that Mr. Tullage spoke about are, would be very, very good to incorporate into the videos. In fact, the minutes that are being taken now can be stored with the video, and I think it would be excellent to index the video according to the agenda and the minutes. Those are then also searchable as full word text searches, so that would be a, would be a very good thing. Our ideal setup would be two cameras, most likely in this case would be on each side of the room, or perhaps one in the back here pointing toward you and one on this side. In doing that, we can pan tilt and zoom onto each speaker. The second camera then can anticipate the person being spoken to and immediately bring in that picture. That switching is done electronically. The encoding, as Mr. Tullage mentioned, is built into the cameras, and the switching and the camera control can be done with a notepad, iPad, tablet, or even a smart cell phone. The manufacturer is JBC of the cameras, and I'll be glad to get information about it to you. Questions about that?
I think we'll get to see the end product.
Very good, you sure will. I'll be passing these up on hand. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, the only other thing I had was to request an executive session, conclusion of the meeting to discuss the settlement of a lawsuit.
All right. I entertain a motion, then, that its conclusion of this meeting would go into executive session. So moved, so just asking, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carried. Thank you, sir. All right, Mr. Hagler, would you give a public works report, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Here in the past week, crews been doing routine maintenance work throughout the county, we've patch and shell repairs, ready, grattling, ditching, ice insulation repairs, working on some construction projects. Bridge crew precasting units on the bridge yard, and they've done quite a bit of maintenance here in the past week, cleaning off bridge decks and other miscellaneous maintenance. I have a, so a couple speed limit requests. I apologize, commission, I put a little bit too much information down, so I'm going to try to simplify it. On Milldale Road, we request that Milldale Road be posted 45 miles per hour, and on the George Newell Road, request that the first three tenths of a mile be posted 25 miles per hour, and the remainder of the road all the way to 216 be posted 35 miles per hour.
All right, that's your recommendation?
Simplify it, yes.
All right, I'll entertain a motion. So moved, can you say it?
Certainly.
Second, any discussion? All right, all in favor of that, that motion, let it be known to say an aye. Any opposed, motion carried.
The only other thing I have is received bids for scrap metal. Received three bids on it, and Randall Freeman's scrap metal was dehived there at $15,375, so Rickman ordered the bid to Randall Freeman.
All right. You heard the recommendation, draw your motion.
So moved.
All right, draw your second, second discussion.
My, the, what they do is, the bidders, they come down and assess what you have and determine what the value is, make a bid, pitch it to us. How much money are we leaving on the table, I mean, we're not talking about a whole lot, if we just loaded that up and took it to where the scrapyard is?
I don't know the answer to that, commissioner, because we've never really weighed it. Well, you know, we could not auction it off and just carry it and dispose of it, that that isn't the commission desire.
We have the equipment loaded and hauling to the, to the value yard. I'd like us to at least see what the value is, and just go around and then revisit it after that. I know we've been doing it for a number of years. That might do with the next pile, because you've already taped bids on it.
You know, we could carry it down there.
I mean, you've got it, you put it in a pile, they all bid on the same thing.
Yes, we put it all in one pile, send that invitation, everyone comes down, looks at it, and makes a bid on it.
I think several years ago, and I'm trying to do this a little bit from the best I can, my recollection, but we were doing it the way as you described for years, we would haul it all and haul it down, and it seemed like that we actually, when we started bidding, we got bored for it, and I don't, I don't know if it was because somebody would separate out the different metals, or I really don't know, but we did get bored.
I think you get a little bit bored because, you know, when they come and look at it, they, you know, they see some items that they might be able to sell, get a little bit more out of them. I don't know, I really don't know how.
You're talking about used, like for used parts, instead of, instead of just to be scrap?
Yeah.
And they see an old engine block there, and they may say, well, maybe we can take that for it. Is that the kind of thing you refer to?
Yes, and you know, sometimes, you know, some people even come by and buy some of the old tires, and you know, whereas if it was left to us, we'd have to pay to dispose of them.
Yeah.
Do we have our tires, and just buy this one, no?
This is just metal here.
Yes, that's the scrap metal.
With the metal, what were the other bids that you, that you received on it?
I believe one, I have here in front of me, well, one of them, I believe $14,000, and I believe one was around $12,000, and I'm just, all right, Lisa, Lisa, do you know, do you have all of?
I have.
I just brought the hot one, I'm sorry. This last bid, I was reading my secretary, but it's, because it was in different lots. Lot one's $400, lot two's $500, lot three is $400. So let's see, that's $1,300, and $200 for lot four. But then, the problem is, for the combined lots one, two, three, and four, they wrote $200. Those were the bids.
All right. Any other discussion? All right, you have a motion, can you say it? All in favor of the motion, let it be known to say an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried.
That's all I have, listen, any questions?
All right. Anyone have any question, Mr. Hagler, just now? No questions, thank you, sir. Mr. Snipes, you want to give your report, bring us up to speed on your trip to Hayleyville today?
Hackleburg.
Hackleburg, I mean.
My name is, may have wrong turn or two, so I almost ended up in Hayleyville, but I know you might have been in the.
I asked the sign, and I took a right, but anyway, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. Have some items today, just to update you on what I reported on last week, it was, I had a meeting with ADACA discussing the possible amendment to the infrastructure grant in City of COVID-19's heart, and they, the staff and director, Byard, were quite receptive to that project. Subsequent to that, I met with McGifford and Associates, and they are working on developing the dollar figures, which of course was paramount to ADACA, rendering a final decision, but again, they were quite positive in their approach to doing that, to make improvements at the intersection of Progress Drive and County Route 59. As the chairman mentioned, I just got back from Hackleburg, where Governor Bentley made grand announcements along with ADACA director Jim Byard, and Tuscaloosa County was awarded $1.9 million in grant funds for the Hope Infrastructure Project, and the chairman will be receiving a form of location of that along with guidelines for implementing that project, one of which will involve, again, working with different associates to make appropriate revisions or resubmit on to ADACA to get that project rolling. But that will, that will help to stimulate redevelopment in the whole community and to allow housing to be built, where so many people lost their homes in the tornado in The, on the Hope Senior Center, the environmental work has been completed on that, working with Mark Architects. The advertisements which are required by Hood will be run this Friday, and additional documentation will be submitted to ADACA pending formal release of that money, bidding of the construction. In a related item, I received contact from regarding a grant potentially to provide a van through Para to assist with transporting senior citizens in and about the whole area to attack back to that senior activities center. And compiling all of this, I noted that we're working in our area, work for the County Commission, with seven different engineering firms, all of which have expressed gratitude to the commission, which uses them on various projects ranging from bridges to water to roads and other items. Last item I have would be to request that the commission move forward with an engineer for the work on the Town Vance County Commission project in the Mercedes area. This will involve a major bridge construction project crossing the USO 11, as well as Norfolk Southern Railroad. There are several partners. There are several partners in this project, most headed by the county commission, Town Avance, Mayor Mahackett, who I have kept up to date with what was going on, and vice versa. Norfolk Southern Railroad, who would be a party, the County Industrial Development Authority, Mercedes Benz, and, and other parties that will be involved. I would recommend that the commission authorize our office to work with part-time meter engineers to develop the required data to be submitted to DOT in order to secure the funding on this project.
All right, you heard the recommendation, do I hear a motion? Move, do I hear second?
Second.
Second, discussion.
What's the estimated value of the property?
Uh, the preliminary numbers, which are very rough, uh, probably in the vicinity of seven to eight million dollars.
This will be similar to that railroad, the railroad crossing, that's down by Mercedes.
Oh, yes.
Coming up highway, yeah.
Yes, so that was built, it was built when, when Mercedes' actual plant was under construction. But it would be similar to that, of course, it's a traffic bridge, not railroad bridge. And then their connecting roads with this, and, and.
Do we have other RFPs on this?
Um, no, sir, what I did, I, uh, talked with Bobby Hager's office, DOT. I verified which firms in the county were certified with DOT for road and bridge design projects on their, I refer to it as wheel call list, where the county commission can simply call a firm and engage them to work, of course concurrent, with, with DOT's final approval on the commission's selection. But in doing that, it was due to the fact that in recent meetings with DOT staff in Montgomery, it was determined that hopefully, if not all of the county's cost on this preliminary work, at least a good portion of it can be absorbed through the use of federal aid money. And to, to do that with other firms would require rather laborious task, as you mentioned, soliciting RFPs, designed around federal guidelines, submitting all of that documentation to DOT in Montgomery, receiving reviews back, and that sort of thing. And we've done it before, but it does, it is quite laborious and time-consuming. And this project needs to be submitted only prior to March first, and of course, I, you know, as y'all were discussing earlier about rearranging some of the commission meetings, it'll, it'll be here before anyone really knows, is aware of that.
So what you're saying is that, that the, the time involved to, to gather RFPs would add to the, the process if you're delayed meeting at that time?
Yes, yes, sir, and it's not, uh, it's not simply where the commission allocates funds for a project, then, then it's a very simple matter to simply send a letter requesting data from different firms. We've done that many times in the past, but in, in this case, when you can possibly save a lot of money to use some federal money, then you've got to take the federal regulations with the money.
So, so an RFP would have to be, be issued, maybe, federal standards?
Yes, they have certain criteria, uh, we have, it has been done a time or two in the past. I don't recall the actual projects where it was done, but, uh, it is quite laborious and time-consuming.
But if the, if the, if the commission make their own selection without going through RFP, that explanation's a project?
Well, yes, but basically, it would be where the commission selects a firm, and will sit that is on that wheel call list. In turn, a letter will be prepared for execution by the chairman to DOT, asking them for concurrence with the award of that contract, which generally takes a few days to hear back on, and then the project will proceed.
Any other questions? Any other comment? Move and second, further discussion, and all in favor of the motion, let if you don't say an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks, sir, that's everything I have. Does anybody got any questions with Mr. Snipes on any other projects, or anything else that's going on?
Thank, thank you, fair.
Anything else, all right, thank you. Mr. Patrick, you want to give, uh, give us an update on the ongoings in your department?
Yes, sir, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Uh, I'd like to report on four items, beginning with the solid waste report. List of the roads that we were able to visit this past week. Had pretty good weather, so we were out and about. And they're broken down by district, and you can see where they're visited here area. Clean Street Report, that's the prisoner litter pickup. We were able to, uh, have a pretty good outing with them, and, uh, and we had some roads in District Two that were nominated, and we took care of those, they were finished up today. Four shows of white on there, it was printed before they finished the road. Litter Ordinance Report, this is our attention to the junk law. We still have the one outstanding case, uh, and offline, I'll, I'll tell you what the, what the deal is on there. Animal Control, we had a busy week, we had a total of thirty-six calls. We just dealt, dealt with dogs and cats this outing. We took twelve animals to Metro, we handed out thirteen notices, and, uh, we had two after hours called.
Just dogs and cats, huh?
Just dogs and cats.
Some reindeer.
No ostriches. We'll probably have some reindeer next week.
I still haven't understood why District One has buzzard calls, and District Two has turkey buzzard calls. I think we need to look into that.
I did, and I think one of them was sent on Thanksgiving.
Oh, is it one of them? Okay, that's a serious difference, okay.
That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
All right, give, give please with your, your pickup situation, still progressing well with the, with our prisoners?
Yes, yes, we're hoping to be able to improve that, get some more prisoners, and a little bit better transportation. But, yeah, it's working good so far.
Do you want to average, well, this past week, how many inmates did you have?
Three.
Three?
Yes, sir.
What's your average?
Uh, for, uh, probably the last three months, well, let me just, real quick, we started out with six. And, and the number is actually being dictated by the type of transportation that we have. And the van that we had is, is, uh, sort of questionable, and we're afraid to take that out anymore. So we're looking for some suitable transportation, and right now, we're using a, a pickup truck that accommodates three people and the driver and the supervisor.
Well, if the benefit is such that, uh, that we need to scour around and figure out how we can improve the transportation because of benefit, certainly, it's something to indicate that we need to find the necessary allocations to get you some equipment to get that done. Maybe we, you know, engineers may have some extra vehicles. I saw a nice pickup truck today, had a King Cab on it, maybe, you know, had a county tag on it, so. They may need something.
I'll, I'll be on the watch, Mr. Chairman.
In light of, in light of a passenger van, a, a bus, yeah, that's what I'm real anxious about, please.
A short bus or a van would be just right.
I have a question, uh, Chief, Chief Tiffany, you have an answer?
Yes.
Do you think that, that New York could find some, some, some inmates within county systems that, that will, that can help in this process?
We do, from time to time, we have inmates that go out also, that pick up trash on roads that we don't want to see before, the passing stuff, so we have done that before, you know, in the past.
Right, I'm, I'm, I'm aware of that, y'all do a good job. I'm, I'm, I'm speaking in reference to what, what Jim is doing, Solid Waste is doing, and, and if there are some inmates that could tag team and, and do a better job throughout the county, because by the time they move one road to the next, they're, they're still behind.
We'll be glad to work with you, just give me a call, we'll be glad to try to work with you what we can, make time to work you well.
Right. If y'all get together, I appreciate it.
I'll be blessed.
Thank you. Anyone have, have any questions of, uh, Mr. Patrick?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Merry Christmas. Merry Christmas. All right, uh, Mr. Spence?
Yes, sir.
Do you have a vacation?
Yes, sir, I have one item, uh, it's a vacation of a portion of road, uh, part of Lakeland Hills Drive, which is in County Commission District One. This is actually, uh, the road has never been constructed, it's planted but not constructed, so they want to go in and vacate this, they're not gonna complete out that part of that something. One owner has purchased all the property, so they're just gonna vacate that road if the commission will allow that.
It's never been constructed, it's, it's just simply.
All right, I'll entertain a motion that we grant or request.
I'm moved.
So moved, do I hear second to the motion?
Second.
Second, further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, let if you don't say an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried. That's all I have.
Thank you, Robert, if you will, you're with Engineering on Fisherman Lane Avenue. And they have a request out there to vacate that road also. Fisherman, do you have any?
Or you have to be where that is?
It's, it's, it's over in the, uh, Highway one forty, back on Church Road, I think, and that's just.
Typically, the landowner that wants it vacated, you know, need to have them contact Robert.
That's what, uh, he's already made contact with me, but we need to get together and, and get his letter.
Sound like my guy, well. All right. Y'all may have seen it, come on up, Jim, uh, all of what's going on with the new reporting of insurance, automobile, it's going to be upon us, so Jim, uh, has not only requested, I've asked him to be here, to move to inform the commission, and then turn, help us inform the public, because what we're going to be encountering, um, January one, so, Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Mandatory, mandatory liability insurance, or liability insurer's been mandatory since, uh, June of two thousand. However, they didn't have a enforcement piece to the legislation, and through the years, and I've given you a fact sheet, uh, that would kind of step you through the process over the years since June of two thousand, of what has occurred. But in two thousand eleven, the Fashion Act, the Legislative Fashion Act, two thousand eleven day, two, two thousand, two thousand eleven day six eighty-eight, we call it the OIBS, or OBS, or Online Insurance Verification System Act. There's other things in it as well, but significant, uh, part of that legislative legislation is that, beginning January the first, two thousand thirteen, no longer can a person just affirm that he has signed the, the Aggregacy, saying, yes, I have insurance. They now have to provide proof that they have insurance. They can do that in a couple ways. The Department of Revenue has provided a electronic means of verifying, we think about eighty-five percent of registrants' vehicles through the electronic means, which would mean that the insurance companies sends a data file to the Department of Revenue server. Department of Revenue allows us to hit that server via web service, and then immediately verify when someone comes up to register a vehicle, uh, that they have insurance. If that doesn't happen, they have to provide us with proof. And on the back of the fact sheet, I've given you the different ways, mainly it's an insurance card, and they're required to carry that insurance card in their vehicle, but it would be, uh, prudent advantageous for them to bring in to register vehicle, just in case, uh, the electronic verification didn't take place. Also, with the, uh, Online Insurance Verification System, they're requiring us to get a valid, unexpired driver's license, which is new also now, and that poses a problem for some people. And that's gonna be, y'all will probably hear about some of the people who don't have a valid driver's license. They can also provide a state non-driver ID, but then you have people that's from outer strait, students, and so forth. There's ways that we can work with them, and the law allows us to do that. But one of the main things we want you to know is, I've provided a fact sheet for, for you to understand that there's gonna be some cases that, um, are out of the ordinary. And my folks, we, we have trained our supervisors and our clerks about the law, and how to hip our registrants, but there's gonna be some times when they may have to go back and get something else and bring it to us, and so, change, change, some people embrace change better than others, so. Some registrants might have to buy a new title. We, as we implemented the immigration law, we tried, we were ready for that, but, um, we found that a lot of people, when their spouse passes away perhaps, or there's a divorce, they don't come in and buy a new title and, and clear up the property title. But if they haven't done that, they're gonna have to do this before we can register the vehicle this time, because each owner on the title has to provide a driver's license, and it has to be insurance on the vehicle. But it's, once again, it's gonna be, uh, asking them to go back and, and buy that.
Explain, uh, explain the purpose of that.
Their, their purpose is to clear the titles so that.
Where the grandmother bought grandson a vehicle.
Yes, sir.
She ties it to him, she's got to prove, she's got to give her driver's license along with him.
If the, if the vehicle's in the grandson's name, no, sir, but if it's, if the vehicle is in grandmother's name, we're gonna have to see grandmother's driver's license, or non-driver's ID.
Okay, I'm just thinking, purpose, I'm just thinking what we're going to be encountering down the road.
Could be your grandmother just has a grandson that drives for her.
That's what, that's one of the things I was thinking of.
Yes.
There's gonna be all kinds of concerns.
Yes, sir, it is, and we would ask for people's patience. In your package, I've provided you a brochure, and we have brochures in all of our offices. I've also provided you with a dedicated, uh, sample of our courtesy renewals that we send out each month, and it, the information is in the renewals. People will read their renewals when they come. The, the information is there and it tells them what they have to have to renew their vehicles. Also, I've given you a copy of a brochure that we did for the office that it gives information about insurance, the new insurance requirement. Tuscaloosa County has been a pilot county and was chosen by the Department of Revenue to be, to take part in the TV commercial ad. Those TV commercials are our employees from the Norfolk annex. So we're, we, we have done all that we know to do to prepare ourselves and the public for the new law. But we just got to go through it. And it's going to take a year. As you know, we go through all twelve months of renewals. After that, hopefully, the title database will be cleared up and insurance will be cleared up.
If it gets cleared up, then I would suspect the municipal court and district courts don't have their hands full. Violators.
People need to know that there is a very stiff fine for not having the insurance. And now, now that it's electronic verification, it's, it's going to be pretty consistent. It's going to be pretty quick. I mean, I mean, they're going to know very soon if they don't have insurance. So it's, it's going to be hard to escape the long arm of the law. Be sure to insureal.com will give people the information that they need, or they can email us or tell us, we'd be glad to give them the information. That's all I have. Any questions?
For those people that don't have emails and don't have that, I guess, like string or whatever.
What about keeping our insurance verification in the court, like we do now?
You still got to do that.
You'll have to do that.
That is correct. You must, you still must do that. That's a requirement of the law.
It seems like that's just a duplication. I guess that's if the trooper's out there, whoever the enforcement officer is, and, and the system doesn't work, if they can't verify, then they'll, they'll be able to ask you for that.
That's correct.
I'm assuming.
They'll, they'll have all, they'll be able to verify whether or not they have insurance immediately. I, I'm, I believe you're right, Judge. I think there's going to be a lot more tickets written for not having insurance. And some would say that's probably a good thing. That concludes my report. Any other questions?
Anyone have any questions? I almost want to throw it out to this audience. But let me just say, let me say, hang around and answer folks' questions, because I'm sure some of them may have some for you, Jim.
All right.
All right?
Thank you very much. Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, for the media that's here, I think it's important that we try to do as good a job as we can in informing the general public as to what we've got that's going to be required on January the first and, and going forward. So aren't you going to make it to headlines?
Yes, sir.
Instead of New Year's Day, old gang, it's going to be New Year's Day. Let's see, Tommy?
Well, I just wanted to come up to you and tell you. My name is Mary Lewis. I'm the director of the District Attorney's Child Support Division. I have been for the last twenty-five years. Totally enjoying my job with flex over me. I had mentioned one time to Judge McCollum that out of all the, out of all the changes in, in the agencies in the country, that child support have more changes than any agency in the entire country. And that's a lot. Homeland's, everybody. So we're constantly changing. But when I'm here today, as I said, we're federally, we're federal, local and state. So Tommy, what we are, Tommy has a contract with the Department of Human Resources in the state. And I submit a budget every year. Tommy signs that I have to meet these federal requirements. And so it is, we are a washout, a wash through basically, okay? But the reason I'm up here today is I've worked with Tommy because I, I do the budget for the District Attorney's Child Support. It's, it's very detailed what the state and the federal need. But I have worked with Tommy. I have seen him slash cost as much as he, he, he can possibly slash in the last, I would say, five years. We have slashed and slashed. And there's, I mean, conferences, books, periodicals. We're doing everything that we can, negotiating with AOC on, you know, how much it's going to cost to access that. There are so many things involved in the operation. Plus, we want to, you know, he has to certainly adequately prosecute the cases of the county. But that's not why I'm up here. I'm up here from a employee. This is the second time that we have asked the commission. We are asking for an additional $200,000. That $200,000, I can assure you, will be put to the best use. We need the funding to do the things that we need to do to operate this county. And, you know, I heard someone say that making the right choices takes a great deal of courage, and it does sometimes. And I know the county has a lot on them. We have, Tommy has already sent all the information that every one of you have requested. He has expeditiously sent that out. Pardon?
Oh, yeah, I asked for the budget. I asked for the.
For the three years.
No, no, no. Just the three-year forecast. But I asked for, to look at the budget, the current budget. This is what I was asked for.
Okay. I thought that had been provided. But as I said, my, my reason for being up here is just to tell you, just from my standpoint as an employee of the District Attorney's office. So at this point, if anybody has any questions to me, I'm going to turn it over to Tommy, my boss.
I appreciate being on the agenda again. Thank you. And I do want to reiterate what Mary was saying. And also continue to ask that the budget be amended to include extra monies that we have asked for and have been asking for for a very long time. This is not a. I wanted to, in addition, along with that, provide some information. I know one thing that was asked for was a three-year forecast. It's just not possible to predict that. There is no way. But our average monthly's non-payroll are about sixteen, a little over sixteen thousand. The payroll for last year, including Mary's, and there is a reimbursement of four hundred and thirty-three for that, was two point four oh one oh five three. That was the total. The first quarter of every year is always the biggest one, and that's the one that we're in. The reason it's the biggest is there are seven payrolls instead of either six, which are in the next two quarters for five and the last. We have a total of twenty-four. For projected, the remainder of this quarter would be seven hundred fifty-four, three twenty-nine, and that's the payroll. Now, of that, the state furnished one hundred eighty thousand, three forty-nine. Child support will reimburse, although it's a reimbursement, it's not at the beginning. It's tail end later when they're trying to scramble to make sure that we can make the next payroll. Hundred thirty-six, sixty-six, leaving us having to come up with a remainder of four hundred thirty-seven, three twenty-four for this one quarter. As far as.
Cases.
Of course, the indirect cost factor for child support, in what we make.
Well, I'm sure it has, there's, most all federal programs have a built-in indirect cost factor to cover overhead.
This is about five hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars for the county. That's what our budget is. That's what it costs me to totally operate.
Okay, but you, when you make, when you make your budget up and you send it to the, like to the federal.
Send it to the state office.
State or whoever, there's an indirect cost factor in there. Do you know what that is? You know what that figure is?
It should be a percentage, you know.
It's sixty-six percent. That's what the federal government supplies.
Okay, well, we probably need to look at it because I don't think it'd be that high. It's a, it's a, it's a number that's allowable for overhead expenses directed to a program, whether it's cost of lights, cost of maintenance, cost of, it's all, it's an indirect cost factor. And I'm just wondering how much of that is in your program based on that amount of money? Just curious, as much as anything.
I will have to say.
Yeah, I could write that down. But it does include, you're talking about payroll and then you're talking about your supplies and your equipment and all that kind of stuff. So I will check with them. And, and, you know, a lot of the federal, the way our office, the county does, the state and the county is that we were reimbursed sixty, the state has reimbursed like sixty-six percent of our operations. And then they have to supply the thirty-four percent.
Okay. Tom, can I ask you a question? How much is, I'm assuming that 2008 was your high watermark for state funding? How much has state funding decreased since 2008?
It's right at forty-one percent.
Okay, and that would be, how many, I mean, roughly dollars? Is that a couple hundred, three hundred?
Six hundred something.
Six hundred something down.
Total that we get.
Right.
Down from a million, I'm sorry, the figures.
No, that's okay. No, I mean, it's several hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, yeah.
But now, the county has not decreased at all. The county has remained stable.
That is correct.
But, okay.
With one exception. There was added, and we do appreciate that, eighteen five four. So you always want to include that because it is there. It helps us get computers and things as the need arises. Case loads, as you mentioned at one point. For the last three years, these are just felony cases indicted out of grandeur. Three thousand, three hundred thirty-three in 2010, 2011, two thousand eight hundred sixty-nine. Cam, no explanation for the decrease, but apparently they made us for it this year because the same in this grandeur makes the changes. This is up tomorrow, it'll be three thousand four hundred and eighty-one. As two forty-two this afternoon, we already had four thousand, one hundred sixty-seven that have received case numbers. That's just felonies and grandeur. That doesn't include all the other things. The, one thing that was, was, apparently has been thought or said or something that the employees in the office are at the highest in the state, which is absolutely not correct. And I've already provided the information to show that that is not correct, either individually or as a whole. And the, where we are now, because of not being able to fill positions, mostly lawyers, I'm down five from the bare minimum global statute of justice. We were supposed to have a lawyer go down to a parole hearing this morning, and I simply couldn't do it. I've been to every one of this particular one, serial killer. And too many other things going within the office. Not looking for seriously, but I went home at seven thirty this morning, so I'm a little batty maybe. And others do the same thing. What we do serves this county, people of this county. I know you know that, but it does. And right now, and these are figures that I've submitted before too, just trying to compare payrolls to payrolls, county funding, county funding and so forth. Montgomery does sixteen times what we do. Jefferson County, just for the DA's office in Bessemer, twelve times. Give us nine hundred and ninety-two. Well, in Montgomery, it's three million, two forty-four, four ninety-one. Of that figure, six eighty-eight, five forty-six is for the pre-trial diversion. We call it clean. For the Bessemer DA's office, it's two million, three thirty-one, eight ninety-two. Madison County, one million, eight hundred forty. Mobile County, I cannot give you an exact figure. I don't have it from them. I do tell the figure based on a natural general's opinion, which is what I was able to get. Or part of what they get, a million, six fifty. Six hundred fifty. There are other things. I don't know what they are, so I'm not including them. And I know each county is unique and different, and I do appreciate that and understand that. Tuscaloosa County is a very big county with, not just geographically, but the number and types of cases that we have. And we need to be, I need the ability to hire more lawyers within the office and more staff. I've got to be able to take care of the ones that I've already got took. So I'm making the, it's the end of the quarter and I'm still here.
So what your, what your problem is, is cash flow, you're sort of behind on the cash.
Well, that's always the case.
It's always the case.
That's always the case.
And then you don't have enough attorneys in the county to handle it.
There's a local, local statute passed ever many years ago, not that many, but it was, that provides to per judge, which would be six, and I'm out of line. They, for a while, or they and the others in the office were on unpaid furloughs, part-time. At least I've gotten past that now. But it's been quite a while. And anyway. I wanted to present that information and make that address again. Thank you, Tom. Thank you.
How many attorneys do you currently have?
Eleven. I've got one who is not past car.
You said what?
Now, in child support, there are two on the contract, and that is separate and different and apart from the, with the local license. Anyway, what I started to say is, there's one who is, who is graduating law school. He's about to take and hopefully pass the bar. And I've got him lined up, hopefully. Assuming those things work out because he's a clerk in the office and I'm trying to foster that. But I've, I've, I've got to be able to get the personnel back up to the bare minimum that it's supposed to be in the first place.
And you, you're going to be short two hundred thousand to get the diversion order?
Each quarter. Now, I want to, I want to be careful how I say it because I want to sound like, I want to be misleading. I'm not going to be able to make this one quarter. Now, beyond that, it's jack to jack, and it always is. And one thing that has occurred because of the drug testing issues and so forth with the pre-trial diversion, I've had to suspend new people going into that. It makes a little money. It doesn't make a tremendous amount, but at least it's something. We've got to get that up and going again. It does a tremendous ser, good service for the county. for the county, university community, and everybody else. Uh, and, uh, we, we absolutely need to get that going, back where it has been. Uh, but, that's an uncertainty.
The, the time that you're spending, the extra time you're spending in the office, is that because you're shorthanded and short?
Well, it's, I don't want to be there all night, I'm gonna show you that.
How often do you get?
They, they, on the radio, they play the same songs over and over, that gets old.
You, you could start watching the commission, they know.
Well, whatever. I mean, someone to keep you.
Well, that would put you to sleep.
Well, maybe up to eight. Well, uh, it was two o'clock last week, twelve o'clock, um, eight, nine o'clock is, usually Robert comes and checks on me when he leaves at ten-thirty, private minor, just to make sure I'm okay and we speak, and, oh, because we've got a good relationship, I appreciate that, so we're nice, and I'm there when they leave.
So, he don't get a chance to walk you to the car?
No, no.
You don't yell?
I'm still there, but that's all.
I, I, I know you've been asking for quite some time, I, I'm on a hot promotion, that's why we can look at the overall funding of the, of the D A's office that we, that he just co-headed, and, uh, the man that does it, well, in addition to two hundred thousand, and with the, with the amount of money that, that, uh, that he's, that Tom has been cut from the state bill and compared to what, what the, what other counties would do, I, I think we need to, here, give a serious, uh, look and consideration to, to, to what his request has been. Now, he's been asking, uh, I know, for support for this commission years since I've been on it, all the vote we've been giving him, and, uh, I'd like for the commission to show some support for, for our local D A's and, uh, amend his budget by two hundred thousand. I can just motion. Uh, just down the dials for like a second, but to take this information and deal with it.
I do think we want to be supportive of the, of the D A's office, I, I really would like to have the finance, people back and actually sit down and go through the budget line by line and bring this back up.
Thank you. Mr. Latt, we finally got to you.
Thank you.
Come on, I know you can, let me tell you, those are the most patient young people standing right there that I believe by.
They've been pretty good, Ed.
They've, they've been as good as some of those church choir.
Better, better than most of them, better than most of them. Well, I'm here representing the Tuscaloosa Character Council, I hope you found a copy of, uh, a book that I brought, which is, uh, basically what, uh, our organization is based around, Character First Program. This is something that, uh, when I presented, uh, this to you last year about the same time, uh, some of you requested that, uh, I bring some students and, and let you, uh, have an idea of sort of what's going on in these classrooms. This program is in all of our elementary schools, twenty-nine of them in the city and county, uh, in addition, this present school term, the twenty-twelve, thirteen year, we have initiated this program in, uh, twelve middle schools in the city and county in the sixth grade. We hope next year to include series two for the seventh graders, the year after that, series three, uh, in the, uh, eighth grade, so, a matter of three years, we hope to have this program fully going in our middle schools, as well as continuing it in, primarily the second grade classrooms in the elementary school. But, uh, I have today from Westwood Elementary School, Ms. Linda Holcomb, who is the guidance counselor, and she's brought some students, and, and the good thing about, uh, Ms. Holcomb, I'll brag on her a little bit, uh, most of the schools are just using it with second graders, but she's using it with all the grades, uh, and, and, as she goes into the classroom. So, we're getting a real binding for our books at Westwood, but I do appreciate her bringing these youngsters with us today, and I'm gonna let her come now and, and use the rest of our time, just to let you see a little bit about what's going on with, uh, Character First. Thank you so much, Ms. Linda.
Thank you. Well, thank you, thank you for the nice words, Mr. Holcomb, and the reason that they're so well behaved is because they've got great parents and great grandparents and great teachers that, um, take the time to teach them character, but all of our students don't have that. So, um, I love this program because it applies wisdom on the front end, and that's where you get the most out of wisdom, is when you apply it on the front end of a project, and by having this, uh, in our schools, um, we're able to talk about a lot of things that will benefit these students all the way through their lives. And just the way this works, and I'm gonna get my helpers to help me in just a second, but the way this works is I go in the classroom and I teach a lesson on the character trait, and is it okay if I bring y'all something to show it to you?
Sure.
Okay.
And white?
All right. Yeah, each one of them. These are my friends, they're our students from Westwood, and I'll let them tell you their names very quickly. Start with you, Lauren.
My name is Laura Booth.
Laura Booth.
My name is Bailey Dana.
Hi, Bailey, how are you?
My name is Bryson Turner.
Thank you.
All right, well, these are, these are our character cards, and these are the traits that we, um, that I teach every year. Some schools have the teacher teach these, but I go in just to keep it consistent, and, um, we're all kind of on the same page with what we're doing, but there's an animal for each trait, and on the back it tells you what that trait means. And the one that we want to talk to you about, I mean, they're all excellent, I love the elephant, just because of Tuscaloosa, and the elephant is obedience, and there's a reason that that elephant is a, is a successful animal, is because it obeys. And we, um, we talk about the animal and how we can learn character traits from that animal, but the one we're gonna talk about very quickly today is gratefulness, and I'm gonna let my helpers help with part of this lesson, so if y'all will come back up. And let's see, um, Bryson, if you'll go stand by Mr. Acker, can you go around there and stand, and I'll make your best stand between Mr. Tingle and Mr. McCall, and we're gonna do this. Go around, if you'll go around.
Go around.
Our activity for, um, for our trait of gratefulness, this is what I would do within a class, we would color a sheet, we'd talk about the animal, we'd probably watch a short video, probably five minutes instead of the whole class or the video, but, um, and then I would do an activity where they would actually learn what this trait means, so I'm gonna give you an activity of what, um, can you help me, Miss Hannah? Okay, and you will go give each one down one of those, everybody gets one.
There's not, there's not a test.
I failed the tennant test, because I've been talking to this person.
That's what I was gonna say, they've been, how do you, how do you? You can, you can answer this out. All right, all right, we are taking the, uh, the word gratefulness, and as you can see, you are supposed to come up with something that you are thankful for, that you are grateful for, uh, for each one of those letters of that word, and we'll let our helpers help you, and I want y'all to share your crayons, be nice and share, and get along and cooperate, please. And so, very quickly, if Bryson, y'all help them, they may need a little help here, if y'all will come up with one thing you're, you're grateful for, for, for those letters, now, now, we don't, we don't have time to do this whole thing, but if you'll, you know, find a couple of things on there, like for R, for grateful, I'm grateful for Russell, my son Russell, my daughter A, what would be A, Anna, and so, y'all take just a few seconds to come up with something you're thankful for. And as y'all are working, I will say, what, um, on the, on this, there's a parent sheet that goes home, which is my favorite part, because it's hard to have children with good character, when that comes from places where parents don't understand about good character. So, this parent preview sheet tells the parent what we're learning in class, tells them what the character trait is and how they can, um, apply it at home, what they can do, for example, on the back it says, remember to praise children for gentleness when they say, I mean, for, why they put my glasses on? I'm grateful for my glasses. Praise children for gratefulness when they say thank you, praise children for gratefulness when they ask what they please, praise children for gratefulness when they don't complain, and praise children for gratefulness when they take care of what they have. We can learn a lot from our children, didn't we? Um, there's an illustration for the parent, and that I also do in class for the animal, like I said, the porcupine is the animal for gratefulness, and Abraham Lincoln is our character, um, historical character that we study about, gratefulness is what we have. And so, now, y'all, are they doing all right, y'all? Are they, are they working? All right, let's, let's just go down.
You just have a couple.
Yes, we have, we don't have time, I know, we have some other people, so, just your act, if you could, if you could help.
I, I, I can do G and R.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, uh, I said gardens, because, you know, I like the.
Okay.
And R is easy as roll tide.
Okay. Mr. Tingle?
Uh, God, for the first one, Riley, my great-granddaughter for the second one, and apples for the third one, and treasure for.
That's what Bryson meant, you put apples too.
Oh, did you say? Well, I'm simple, I'm so happy for my grandchildren, Patrick, I'm so grateful for these cute children that are up here, and, and I jumped all the way down to family, because I, I love my family.
All right, thank you. Mr. Moore?
Well, I'm gonna do, uh, if you and Al is gonna be family, and, uh, pretty quick, here, uncle and love of our country.
All right. Well, thank you, you can see how just doing a very simple activity like that makes you stop and think about what the word means, and it's fun, and you have to share, and it's very simple, basically everything that we need to do in a lesson like this is just on a sheet of paper. So, I'm gonna pass out to you, well, Bryson, if you'll come over to sit your plus box. If you will pass out and give everyone a parent preview sheet, so that I can see what that looks like. And this would go home in the student's backpack, um, and the students are told, please type this out, show it to your parents, because of course we have parents that don't check backpacks, they need to work on their character, and because this is, so, you know, not only are we teaching the student the lesson, the students are teaching their parents the lesson, so, that's the good thing about it, and as y'all know, just in the recent days of everything that's been happening, we need character now more than ever, so, I love this program because it works on the front end, instead, instead of having to fix something later, so, it's a great program and I love it, and I, I've been in my program at school, so, thank you, thank you Bryson, and thank you Bailey, and thank you Lauren, thank you. Any questions? And y'all can get my crayons back, it's like, like, doodle while they're supposed to be working.
Well, I thought those, I thought those grandkids would go have some more or something.
Well, thank you so much for your support, counsel, appreciate you so much.
Ronnie was a test match.
That's right. I did forget one thing, our students today made y'all thank you cards, and we are sending you some cookies, so, we're grateful for y'all and the work you did for our, for our citizens.
Thank you.
And they're from Self-First and Factory, they're really great.
So, thank y'all. It's a good way to start the holiday, thanks. I'll keep the cookies.
Maybe share.
Oh, wow. I haven't had that one.
I'm making a motion.
It's called generosity, here, actually. Thank you again, that was excellent, and again, let me compliment those students, because they were, uh, just sitting here and then going through it, I know makes Jeff Brown happy, because he's been part of Character Council for a long time, he and Bailey both, and, uh, back then. There were all of that. Ms. Thompson, come on up.
I'm glad that they had the Character Counsel lesson, so I will say to you, I am grateful that, uh, that you placed, uh, placed me on the agenda on such short notice, uh, and then I've got a request, uh, after I make my presentation, I request that no one make a motion, uh, because the motion that was made for funding, uh, to support funding for the district attorney's office did not get a second, so, I'm, I'm, I'm here to, we will have to talk about funding, but I don't want anybody to make a motion.
This is your first time.
Oh, okay, good.
I move.
Um, this, hopefully, uh, each of you has had an opportunity to at least look at the proposal that, uh, that, uh, has been submitted on behalf of Stillman College in Residence, uh, West Tuscaloosa. Uh, let me just give you, so I'm not gonna go over the proposal itself, but let me just give you a little bit about the history and, and, and where we are on this. Uh, this proposal has actually been in the works since, uh, I guess, the fall of two thousand ten, when Stillman's president expressed a desire to have the college play a, uh, an expanded role in the revitalization of West Tuscaloosa. Uh, Stillman has looked at a number of different options and concluded that the best way to be successful is to engage residents, uh, the business community, and government in, in doing things to improve West Tuscaloosa. Uh, over the course of about a year, uh, Stillman started gathering information, demographic information regarding, uh, the community in which it is located, and it noticed, and of course, all of us knew, but we didn't have the documentation, that, uh, that there is high unemployment in West Tuscaloosa, that there is high poverty in West Tuscaloosa, and that there is low educational attainment in West Tuscaloosa, so, we realized that there is that correlation, of course, we also suspected that there was that correlation, but, uh, some areas in West Tuscaloosa have, uh, a poverty rate of about thirty-three percent. In, uh, April of two thousand eleven, actually it was April twenty-fifth, two thousand eleven, Stillman College, uh, the Literacy Council of West Tuscalo, I'm sorry, of West Alabama, and the Tuscaloosa Education Network, uh, sponsored a public screening of the documentary Waiting for Superman, and I don't know if any of you were, uh, in attendance at the Bama Theater, but that happened on April twenty-fifth, and Stillman sort of felt that this is a good way for us to really start dealing with some education issues in West Tuscaloosa, because you've read newspapers and you know that the schools in West Tuscaloosa have basically the lowest attainment, uh, uh, records of any schools in, in, in the city. Well, Stillman thought, okay, we'll, we'll do the, the screening of Waiting for Superman, and then we will jump into a community conversation on what we do to improve the situation around education, and, uh, and then that'll lead us to doing some things, to, to actually implementing some things. Well, that was on April twenty-fifth, and, uh, April twenty-seventh, we had the tornado, and, uh, and Stillman, along with everybody else, decided that our priorities should be on recovery, uh, for the city of Tuscaloosa, and, and the whole education, uh, uh, issue took a backseat. But Stillman started looking at, uh, federal ways, federal funding for projects that would really focus on the issues that it wanted to address, and, um, and it noticed that the Department of Education had what is called a promised neighborhood program, and that there was actually funding available, federal funding available, to do planning, the kind of planning that Stillman envisioned for West Tuscaloosa. Uh, we gathered twenty, more than twenty, uh, local entities that had an interest in working, uh, across, uh, disciplines, to make sure that we do what is best for children and the West Tuscaloosa community. We submitted a proposal in two thousand eleven, and, um, it's a very, and I'm sure the county has. And it's a very, I'm sure the county has applied for some federal funds and, and some of those applications have been funded and some have not been funded. With federal funds, applying for money, it's, it's a very competitive process. In 2011, I think only about four million, four or five million dollars was made available nationwide for Promise Neighborhood Planning. And, um, and I think that there were about four hundred applications and fifteen grants were made. Stillman did not get the grant, but Stillman did score one hundred percent on the need category. Uh, we presented an excellent case for need for the West Tuscaloosa community. The reviewers' comments reflected that a problem with our proposal was that we did not have a history in Tuscaloosa of working collaboratively to address problems. That, you know, one organization would do its thing, another organization would do its thing, but there was, there was no way that we were leveraging the, the talents and the assets that we have in this community. So the twenty-plus people or entities that had been involved in the 2011 planning decided that we wanted to try to apply again this year, 2012, make another application and take the time to start working together. And we've done that. Uh, there are actually twenty-two, I think this year we have twenty-two entities that have signed on as collaborators. The Department of Education is supposed to make an announcement in December. And, um, generally, if they're gonna make an announcement and they have selected the project, they will notify the applicants that the project has been selected before they make the, the public announcement. On Monday, I checked with Stillman and Stillman has been, not been notified that they were selected. Uh, so it's quite likely that, that Stillman will not get the grant this year. However, the twenty-two collaborators who are involved in this project have said, we want to make this happen whether we get federal funding or not. And at this point, we have done everything that we can do without money to get, to get things started. So we've submitted this proposal to the County Commission and we intend to submit a proposal to the city of Tuscaloosa. Uh, Stillman has actually, it's, it's been carrying the program basically with in-kind contributions over the last year. It is estimating that, that over the course of, of, of the planning, and, and of course, this is, this is a proposal for our planning. This is, you know, we'll, we'll do the implementation later. But in order for us to even get to the point where we can get somebody to fund what we need to do to improve the situation in West Tuscaloosa, we've got to plan it. And, uh, and, and we've not done that. So this is a proposal to fund the planning process. This is stage one of, of this process. Stage two will give us an opportunity then to, to make applications to national foundations that, that would fund projects that would improve the outcome, the educational outcome and social outcomes of, of folk in West Tuscaloosa. I, I don't know if you actually had an opportunity to review the proposal or not. Uh, if you have, then I would be happy to entertain any questions that you have. Um, and I have placed my, um, contact information with the proposal so that you can get in touch with me if you have questions later.
So are there any other, uh, like foundations or anything that, that, that this is, uh, um, an opportunity to present? And what jumps out at me is, you know, David Matthews and Keeter and was so.
Keeter and Foundation.
You know, they were, they were really big in, in this type of process. I'm just curious or if we.
Yeah, let me, let me just, let me, let me sort of explain that by, by telling you that generally foundations want to see what you're doing, what you're investing, what the local community is investing. Most of them will, will, will help a community that's helping itself. So when, when it sees that there is some level of investment that's taking place at the local community, then they will be more attracted to your proposal. Uh, problem in, in Tuscaloosa is that we have not done a whole lot of investing. Uh, you know, we've done, you know, we've done some infrastructure things in, in West Tuscaloosa. But when we look at economic development, in fact, in, in the proposal, there is a quote from the mayor's, um, um, website where, where, um, he says that he wants, one of his core beliefs is that West Tuscaloosa should benefit from the economic, um, uh, progress that has been made in Tuscaloosa County, just like the rest of Tuscaloosa County. And, uh, and I think that, that most of us recognize that that has not happened. Uh, that's one reason why it was really exciting when, uh, when the Tuscaloosa City Board of Education decided to locate the Technology Center in West Tuscaloosa. Because that says that West Tuscaloosa, we are recognizing that this is a part of our larger community. And, um, but yes, there are foundations, but generally those foundations look for what you have done locally before they invest. So if we can get some local investment, I don't think that we'll have a problem getting, attracting foundations to invest in us, but we've got to, we've got to commit locally. And this will be an investment. And as I heard the District Attorney talking about all of the stuff that they have to do in the DA's office, I thought, man, if they had done what we need to have done on the front end, then maybe they wouldn't have those problems on the back end.
Why would you check into his head? He's agreeing with you.
Yeah, you were in the DA's office, weren't you?
Anyone have any questions, Ms. Thompson?
Thank you, Sue.
Thank you.
So you got a timeline for implementation of that? Starting in January going forward?
Yes, that, that starts in January. Um, so if, you know, if the county can, can, can give, if it is interested in investing in, in, in the West Tuscaloosa community, investing in this process so that we can get something, you know, going there, then, uh, you know, the sooner you can do it, the better. But I don't want you to do it today.
No, we're not, we're not voting against it. But, uh, where, where is this proposal?
Well, actually, we didn't, what we, what we've done is let that open. We've let you know on the budget, and I think that's page twenty-five. By the way, on that budget, uh, one of the, one of the items, uh, sort of dropped down and it's not aligned properly. But, uh, but the total needed from non-Stillman sources is two-hundred-and-ten-thousand-two-hundred dollars. So, you know, ideally, if the County Commission would do one half of that and then we could get the city to do a half of it, we'd be real happy. Um, Stillman is, 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 is putting in a hundred-and-fifty thousand in-kind. Thank you.
Okay, before I get to the, uh, you wanna bring up?
Real briefly, we put a, a package, I think I've got all have this, talked about the public use projects that we fund at schools, voluntary private apartments, whatnot. It appears that those are all done individually, uh, right now. And what I'd like to ask the staff, the administrative staff along with the legal staff, would be to come back to us with a, a process that we could make it a more holistic, comprehensive view and fund these projects on an equal basis by district. Perhaps create something in, in next year's budget by each district so that, um, we won't have to go through all the detail of this right now. But if we could come back in like the March thirteenth meeting with the administrative staff, maybe the legal administrative staff, work with that to try to develop a process for the commission that we, on that we could look at and vote? That was all I was, was wanting to ask. If we could ask the staff to do that, I don't know if we really require a motion for that or just.
Wouldn't that be something? Because there's another thing I wanna kind of add to it. It's not, uh, I want to ask Commissioner, uh, Tingle if he would work with, you know, we've been trying to work with the, uh, another segment of our community issues, that subdivision. Working with home builders and working with Farrington and, and Bobby Hagler, uh, in refining. I think we got a pretty good plan, but what we, what we really need to look at in the next couple of, uh, few weeks leading up to the session is maybe what we need to do to strengthen the legislation aspect of subdivisions. Because I, to me, and I think what gets missing a lot of times with subdivisions is, I won't change those.
No, no, I'm, no.
Lump the two together and just administratively handle it and bring it back. But I think that one of the things that's missing is, is, folks don't understand, they try to compare city government to county government so often in, in dealing with problems, similar problems. But we're not similarly empowered. They got all, we got a lot of responsibility with no authority. They got the responsibility and all the authority. And they can deal with them. And what, and I use as an example of that is simply that they have the ability to, to, to do, uh, assessments and subdivision improvements. Now, we don't have that ability. We need to have that ability, particularly as it relates to some of these subdivisions that have gone bankrupt. And a developer is gonna come in and be able to, uh, tally on fifty new lots and expects the public to fix him a road and do all the improvements because there's ten people and they bought lots. Well, that's not fair to anybody. And, uh, that can be really easily applied if we have the ability to assess those lots and those improvements. Because I know that there's a real big, there's a big national, uh, uh, home building organization that's moved into our community. It's doing just what I'm saying. And it's, it's gonna be, it's, it's not fair. It's just not fair to the, the builders or the developers. And it's not, it's, we need to address it, is all we're saying. And I think, and I'm gonna ask you, as chairman, I'm gonna ask you to work and bring something back with the commission and gain input from the other commissioners as to, uh, working with the home builders on that. If you, if you would agree to.
I'd be glad to do that, Judge. I, I think that, you know, you know, I've read through these regulations and I can tell you, they don't have any teeth to them. So we gotta get, we gotta move the gas to teeth. And that, and that's probably going to require some legislative action in order to do that. You have anything else?
No, no.
You have anything you want to bring up? Mr. Murray?
Uh, yes, uh, Bobby, I'll get this while you was up. But on Paulster Loop Road, they have to request in from one of the property owners to post the road, no through traffic so that the sheriff department would, would be able to enforce people who are just riding through and letting out the road and vandalizing property in that area. Uh, I'd like us to spin the rules so that we can go ahead and vote on posting it, no through traffic, probably with a recommendation so that it can get done before schools that's out for the holidays and will have a tremendous amount of students that will be mud riding through, through that road.
Explain that. No through.
So the people, people that are just driving through for no purpose, uh, they, 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 they will have to have a reason for being in that. We have teenagers and we've got one fatality in the area where, where they, they go down through, they, they drink and they ride, mud ride through the road. Tear up the road and it's just a mechanism to get us, some way that we can, we can hold accountable for just being in the area without no purpose. Just don't know how we do that. It's a public road. I mean, I'd love to do it. I understand the problem. How do you, how do you deal with that, Robert? How can we deal with that, Robert?
I'm, I'm not sure.
What does the property owner have to talk to Sheriff Park about that? Ron, if you was dressed and I appreciate it and you wish the best, we can go there.
Uh, I just contacted, uh, Jack Collins, we own some property down there. And, uh, because of our debt, he's, they contacted me, one or two, and he said, well, they were having a problem with people with four-wheelers and, uh, big trucks and stuff coming through there. And they're gonna be here and just mud riding, basically.
Where are they, where we going?
On Paulster's Loop.
Paulster's Loop Road?
Yes, sir.
That's very important. Such a public road.
Yeah. And we've, we've sent officers down there. We've had, you know, deputies down there addressing it, but it's, it's a, you know, it's a problematic path for a while. I was gonna ask Bobby, maybe who would be able to do it and see to what potentially takes twelve or thirteen to be available or something.
I think that's more question for Robert as it is to Bobby, guy. You know, we could, I don't know how you could.
But I mean, it's complete loop sign.
Yeah.
It's not like going into a neighborhood.
No, it, 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 it's another, goes through other property owners, loops back into the same road. There's two ways to get there. Uh, from point A to point B, you go by, you go by C.
I'll give Bobby and see what we can do. There's gonna be some mechanisms, but I, I don't, I, I don't know what posting it does for you, to be honest.
I, I guess it'd just be a discourager. I, I don't know that you can enforce it. That'd be the whole thing, which you gotta have something that you can enforce. And, and to say that it's just no through traffic. I mean, I don't know.
Well, that's true. They, they, they. Totally without anybody. What you know, the four-wheelers, the, the, the.
Yeah, it's the, and they did, but they did, you know, those guys are, they doing that to every dark road, seems like, particularly if it gets wet.
That's when it becomes a riding, when it's wet and it's.
Turned that mud ride.
Not the four-wheelers, that's a pickup truck from.
Yeah.
Five inches of the road.
Well, I remember one Christmas season and it hadn't been that long ago. We had somebody drive riding with a, with a, with a big, uh, muscle truck running over stop signs and road signs. And that was a, that was certainly a problem. It was a safety hazard. I don't know how to get there legally. I don't know how to get there. Get there.
No, I'm just.
Yeah, I'm pissed off, I'm pissed off.
One most and posting that those, no through traffic, uh, to, to get us through the holidays, we better do something that we could do.
I think, and Bobby, I don't know that he has to make that. I mean, would you? I, I would hate for us to get up here and the government and we say that we're going. Well, that's a fault to it. Uh, no through traffic is a dead-end road.
Or possible solution.
Yeah, I, I'm willing.
Game cameras.
Pardon?
Game cameras. Property owner puts up a couple of game cameras, gives you the photographs. Okay, if you have photographs of them damaging the road.
That's, that's, that's a self-policing issue and you're exactly right. That's the way, that's certain of something.
It's simple. And what, fifty bucks for a game camera?
Yeah.
All right, and something they also can take and also do that at their gates to the different hunting venues down in the gas potty. The other problem is that they, they ram the gate, so you can take chains and pull up the gate.
That's property damage.
Ron, you can take action for destruction of public property.
Thank you, sir. Good sample solution.
Trying to keep it simple.
All right. All right, is anyone in the commission chambers? I just opened wide open. Is anyone in the commission chambers, uh, that would like to address your commission? Anyone has a chance? Yes, sir?
And Mr. Jones?
Uh, you want to come on up or?
No, I won't, sir.
All right.
I'll be back. Uh, I have two simple questions. I've got a caller, my, uh, remote. I wonder, new manager's, you know, they, she said, I had. I wonder, do you maintain insurance, you know, they, she said I had to buy insurance on it. I'm trying to find motor force. The child is out running, had run in six months.
Well, there's a license commissioner behind you. I think if you get something that certifies it, it's not on the road, that's, you know.
Vehicles that are inoperable or in stores and not required to have, those were about the reason.
What about tags?
The tags are applied to the ordinances of the city and the county.
All my tags was handled with a K F U P.
When you come in, your tags, the tags will go that as D V is to him from the.
Thanks very much. Thanks, Judge.
You're welcome, sir. All right, let me, let me, let me say Merry Christmas to everyone, and we'll see you, and hope we have a happy new year. Thank y'all. Meeting adjourned.